Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to 2023. Yay. For many of us, I'm sure we are happy to see 2022 in our rearview mirror, but welcome to 2023. It's great to see all of you. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council agenda for this Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell has not yet arrived. Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Bran Sutter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
Mayor Wayland.
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. And now, if you'd please rise and join me in a brief moment of silence in recognition of the service of our men and women overseas, including those serving our community connector, the Tutu Striker Brigade, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, and we first enter into our proclamation and presentation section of tonight's agenda. First on our agenda is Hanford McLeod from our friends at the Nisqually Tribe is going to give us an update on the status of the Chief Leshai Marker here in the city of Lakewood.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council for giving us the time here, and I think the idea behind the Leshai Marker and what had happened to it just recently here on the 26th, I believe, of December, and having it, you know, pulled out of its place and I would go as much to say, you know, if it's desecrated or not, I know that I know on the Nisqually side, you know, having that marker, we want to see it more enhanced, more so as that education, as that teaching, you know, that's what we need to see in that place there, because there is a lot of conversation around that and, you know, where he was hung and what had happened and things like that that really need to be told in kind of that history setting or that school setting. I do, I do some of that work and I enjoy doing it. I guess what I'm looking to recommend maybe is on January 27th, you know, this marker's been in place, got since, what, 1963, I believe, or somewhere in there in the early 60s. It was placed in, in, I don't know how to, I don't know how to say it, because it says 300 yards from where he was hung, correct? So, so really putting that, not accurate information, you know, but we want to really tell that, that information of, of what had happened. We do these walks. We do a lot of honor walks, and these walks kind of slow down the history of what we're talking about when you walk across the area. We do it over on JBLM on some of the allotment property, kind of condemned back in early 1900s. So, we have this, this, this teaching where we, we take our young ones out. I got my family here tonight to, to continue that, right? Because this is where the teaching happens out there, where we talk about the place, the setting, and what had happened. We walk back across the allotments to show the kids that this is where our ancestors are from, and this is kind of like that, that treaty that we got out of the agreement. This marker up here, working with the Lakewood Parks over the last few years on placing that, the Fort Silicon Park you have, and, and placing there, you know, we could, we could put a destination there, right? A, another marker, and then you can go from these markers to see this, and these markers don't just start here and stop here. Okay, so this goes from up here, and then it goes down the valley, goes across Pacific Highway, goes up Old Pacific Highway, and then it goes over there on the other side of what we call Meridian or Mullen over there where the airport wants to go to, somewhere in that Yelm Highway area. And each marker shows the, the path of the Nisqually people. So, squaliops means people of the river. So, along this river is where our ancestors have been and will be, right? So, I talk about that in a setting of telling the history, not talking about past history. So, that's kind of what I want to see come out of, out of this incident, right? I mean, it is, it is, it brings attention to it to where now enhances what we want to see, especially, you know, what I see for the future of Nisqually tourism, places of destination that need to be kind of talked about more in the area, right? So, so I'm, I'm that gentleman, Hanford McLeod from the Nisqually Tribe. I should have introduced myself before I spoke. I'm sorry. I am the government, the government liaison for the Nisqually Tribal Council and a previous council member at, at Nisqually. And Chairman Frank would call me the historian or the history teacher of the area, because it is, it is near and dear to my heart. I know a lot of it. I could probably spend the next hour telling you about the history. So, having a walk and then having a place on January 27th, which is a Friday, it's a, it's a, not a holiday, but we take the day off at our administration. So, we close down the Nisqually administration and other things to celebrate his birthday. I'm suggesting we do a walk from that marker to that Fort Silicon Park, that dog park that's going up with the kiosk we want to put in the middle of the new restrooms in that area right there. So, so that way we can then tell the story, talk a little bit more about it, and put more attention into that kiosk board and what we would like to see there, right? I mean, we could say a lot of the history and then what, what do we want to see in a place like that? That talks about, you know, for, for Hanford to talk about the history, it's like, this is how the state was formed, on the backs of my ancestors during this war and this place of time. So, Lushai died for his people to live this life. So, we really need to honor that a little more, and I, I, I see that on our side too, and I talk about that. That's why I'm so keen in getting into schools and getting into places. And really, I mean, I talk to all the rotor clubs around here to, to give more information of the prairie that you're on with the lakes that flow down into the river and into that valley. And so, the most important, which I always like to say, is the water. But let's not forget the water, and you hear that a lot today. You know, you see it in a big movie on the big screen. It's called Avatar, The Way of the Water. So, it's important. Takotma, takotma. So, takotma means don't forget the water. And that's what comes off the mountain that flows down to us here. It's not the mountain per se. It's the, it's the glacier and the water that comes from that mountain. And there's a legend or a story, right? You hear these legends that are taught, but this is a story that was taught to us for thousands of years about this water and about this place. So, I'm working on that with Maurene here. We're building a state park there outside of Eatonville, Michel River, big confluence of water, very sacred, very important, and even down here on this prairie, Fort Silicon. We bought the Braggot Farm down there along the front of the waterway. We have Billy Frank Jr. Wildlife Refuge. So, there's a lot of these things going into place. I guess my point is too, by 2024, we want to have this, it'd be like an anniversary. It'd be the 50-year anniversary of Judge Bolt. Some of you don't know about the fish wars here, 1974. Judge Bolt signed an agreement, 50/50, co-managers, you know, so these words and these things that are now coming into play, which I see. And it would be the teaching. So, Lushai has this teaching, and I always talk about it because it says, do not forget who you are. Teach your children, teach your children, children, and teach their children about a great people, because there'll be a time where we celebrate and my spirit will be with you. So, he's talking about today, right? We're in this time today. You can feel it. Kids are important. Kids are the biggest resource we have today. Put everything else aside, and you can see that, how important that is. So, so that's what I want to see, that, 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 that saying go out there more. It's used in Seattle. It's used in Portland and these big cities that know how important Lushai was to this state and to the territory at that time. I'll shut up. I'm sorry. I enjoy speaking about him and speaking of him because he was that important person. So, I appreciate the time up here, and I'll be working on a flyer that I'll share with you, Mayor, and others, John, when, when it comes time here in the next, probably next week. And that way we can open it up to the public. I'm going to bring my horses from our new horse ranch. Lushai had over 100 horses along this prairie and along this waterway. And horses were a big staple, just like salmon is to our people. So, we're revitalizing that horse program. So, we'll bring them along to show that this is that teaching we're talking about, well, Lushai always talked about in this area. So, thank you, Mayor and Council for, for listening to me here today.
Well, thank you for coming, Hanford. Very appreciative as always to have you here and tell the story. And to catch the audience up, those of you who've been in Lakewood for some time may have seen a historic marker over by Silicon Boulevard. It's over by one of the strip malls over there by where the Blockbuster used to be, and the, the four-ton granite boulder that was on site reads, "Leshai, chief of the Nisqually's martyr to the vengeance of the unforgiving white man was hanged 300 yards southeast from here on February 19, 1858." And that marker was erected in 1963 by the Pierce County Pioneer and Historical Association. And for some unknown reason, unknown to at least me, there may have been a, a car that hit it or knocked it over and ran, kind of a hit and run, and it knocked the boulder over, and some well-meaning residents brought it to everyone's attention. Initially, the city said, gee, it's not on our property. We don't own it. Reached out to our friends at the Nisqually Tribe, and through good work, you know, out of challenge comes opportunity. Through good work, the city was able to coordinate with the property owner and certainly with Hanford's assistance, kind of get the boulder resurrected on site, and now we have an opportunity to do something special about it, and we really appreciate our partnership with the Nisqually Tribe, all that you bring to us by way of cultural significance, and this is but one great example of things to come.
Yeah, it's, what, what I was mentioning was the anniversary of the exoneration of Lushai in the Pierce County Historical Court back in 2004. So, 2024 will be that, you know, 20, 20, 20-year anniversary or 25-year anniversary, somewhere in there. So, I know a lot of, you know, descendants of Lushai, Cynthia Iel, former councilwoman, our administrator, she has this, you know, grand, I wouldn't say grandiose plan, but it's a great plan about, you know, kind of targeting the area as Lushai country, you know, where he roamed. His, his lineage comes from the Yakima side of the mountains over there along the lower part of, of White Swan in that area, and so, so that's that road that he would take across to, to the other side of the mountains there in Highway 12. So, so we're, we're excited about all these dates, because there are quite a few of them that we want to really highlight in 2024, and this, this will be part of it, you know?
That'll be great.
Have that, have that place going. So, oh, and they're doing a Billy Frank Jr. Statue, so they're going to replace Marcus Whitmore at Settury Hall in DC. So, it's kind of one of the biggest things you ever see is, you know, somebody, you know, not so far back in history, but somebody closer to, to where we are today being in that hall. So, that'll happen by 2024 also in this state, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll take that over to DC. We'll take Marcus's statue down. There'll be this big ceremony that'll happen in 2024 also. So, it all ties together, or I would, like I would tell everybody, it all weaves together, you know, interlocks and creates a connection. So, thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much for coming. And thank you, Mr. Warfield, for your writing of it. We appreciate it. You too. Thank you. Next, we'll have a proclamation declaring January 16, 2023, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. And for this, I'd like to have Kim McGinn and Sylvie Johnson join me at the podium to receive a proclamation. No, I'm doing it. Well, it is with great pleasure that we are here today to provide and present this proclamation on behalf of the city of Lakewood. Whereas Monday, January 16, 2023, is designated as a federal holiday, celebrating the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who dedicated his life to the fundamental principles of freedom, opportunity, and equal justice to all. And whereas such recognition is a direct result of his many contributions to society through his deeds and words. And whereas through his march on Washington and the "I Have a Dream" speech, Dr. King reached a worldwide audience and was recognized by people from all walks of life as a conscience of an entire nation. And whereas all Americans are reminded that our nation recognizes that all men are created equal and should be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to the ideals of a free society and is a community of great cultural diversity, which it values and celebrates, and is dedicated to the fraternity and community of all people. And whereas the city of Lakewood will again honor the distinguished legacy of Dr. King with videos that will be released starting on January 6, 2023, highlighting the theme that everybody can be great because everybody can serve. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby proclaims Monday, January 16, 2023, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service here in the city of Lakewood, and we invite all residents to join us in this observance. Proclaim this third day of January 2023, Jason Wayland, Mayor. And I am pleased to present this proclamation to our good friends who have spent so many years of service here in the city of Lakewood, putting on the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, and I'm sure more to come. Kimmy. Say a few words, feel free.
You know, it's al- always an honor to, to honor Dr. Martin Luther King, because he has played such a significant role in uniting us, and, and when we look at what's happening in the world today, it's more important for us to work together as a team, and this has truly been, Mayor, a team effort. There's been several organizations that came together to plan this year's celebration. I'm honored that this is my third year to be on the committee, and I'm excited to always give this back to the city of Lakewood. And we're going to do a little different this year. We're actually going to do a lead-up into the celebration. So, next week, we're going to be launching Heroes of the Lakewood Area, and so each day there'll be a video highlighting Heroes of Lakewood, and then we will come to fruition and culmination at the end on the actual day of the celebration, January 16th, where we'll be doing a video to highlight Dr. Martin Luther King. So, we're excited that we've been, been able to do virtual. We're hoping that next year we can go live again, which is always fun. I want to turn it over to Sylvie. Sylvie is our expert who did all of the technical work and the scripting and making sure that this would come to fruition. We are reviewing the tape tomorrow to make sure everything is ready to rock and roll next week, but on behalf of the committee, we're excited to present to the city of Lakewood again, the Martin Luther King 2023 Celebration.
Hi, my name's Sylvie Estrella, and I had the honor of creating the videos for this year's celebration, and I was asked to come, and I didn't know I was speaking. So, I didn't come prepared to speak. I just, I was going to actually be taking pictures, because that's what I do. I'm so excited to present the, this year's videos. There's six of them, and highlighting, as Kimmy said, six heroes in Lakewood, because everyone can be great, because anybody can serve, and that's what Martin Luther King said, and that's the theme that we're using this year. And we're so excited. We've got some really wonderful people in Lakewood, and we're highlighting them, and we know there's so many more people out in Lakewood that are helping our community and just giving back, and that's what it's all about. Thank you very much.
And now we have a special opportunity that is unique to the city of Lakewood to recognize one of our own who has reached out and spread her wings to do some incredible and amazing things in the music industry. So, I'd like to call on Ms. Janay Bridges to meet with Deputy Mayor Moss at the podium to receive this proclamation and a symbol of goodwill for coming back here to your hometown Lakewood and blessing us with your talent.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for attending tonight. I want to start this by saying that Lakewood takes great pride in recognizing, encouraging, and supporting our youth. And tonight, it is the pleasure of the Lakewood City Council to present this proclamation to one of our own. And the proclamation reads, "And whereas Grammy Award winner and Grammy-nominated Janay Bridges hailed from Lakewood, Washington, where she grew up and attended Idlewild Elementary School and Charles Wright Academy in University Place nearby. And whereas Bridges received her Bachelor's of Music degree in vocal performance from the Manhattan School of Music, her Master's of Music degree from the Philadelphia Esteemed Curtis Institute of Music, and completed a three-year residency at Lyric Opera in Chicago."
And whereas Bridges is a winner of the Marion Anderson Vocal Award, prestigious Sphinx Medal of Excellence Award, Richard Tucker Career Grant, Francisco Van Ass International Competition, Sullivan Foundation Award, Sarah Tucker Study Grant, Richard G. Gold Grant, and Leotine Price Foundation Competition, among many others. And whereas Bridges is a mezzo-soprano and made her Metropolitan Opera debut in 2019, singing the part of Nefertiti in a sold-out run of Philip Glass's Hocknotten, and she has performed around the world in premier engagements and at some of our nation's top performing arts centers, singing alongside philharmonic groups and solo. And?
Whereas in 2020, Bridges was named one of the top 100 most influential African-Americans by The Root, Charles Wright Academy Alumni of the Year in 2020, and in 2022, she was announced one of the Kennedy Center's Next 50 Cultural Leaders and has emerged as a leading figure in classical music shifts toward concert conversations of inclusion and racial injustice in the performing arts. And?
Whereas the upcoming 2023 opera season will spotlight Bridges with the debut engagements at the Arena de Verona, the Canadian Opera Company, the Dutch National Opera, Lyric Opera of Chicago, the Detroit Symphony, and the National Symphony Orchestra. And?
And whereas Bridges is returning to her Pacific Northwest roots to debut as Delilah in a concert performance of Samson and Delilah on January 20 and January 22 at the Seattle Opera. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council does hereby recognize Janay Marie Louis Bridges for her exemplary accomplishments and achievements nationally and internationally, and for being a role model and leader in the performing arts here from the city of Lakewood.
Yes. Thank you so much, Mayor Wayland and Council. I've sung in a lot of pretty major institutions and opera houses, concert halls around the world, but I have to say that this is probably the most prestigious setting and grand setting that I've been in in a long time. It's always such a pleasure to come home. I feel as soon as I step out of the airport, I can breathe again. The oxygen levels, it just is like, I'm so grateful to be a product of Lakewood and the Pacific Northwest. I'm grateful for my family and my village, my friends who have supported me from day one, and that to me is really what Lakewood is all about, the support and family and friends. So, I'm, I'm just very humbled and honored for this proclamation and recognition, and I'm just, I'm excited to be home. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I the original, so come on down. We'll take a photograph and be honored to be with you. We're going to take a brief 10-minute recess, so if you'd like to meet Janay and the family, we'll just have a, a little meet and greet for a few moments, and then we'll reconvene back at the dais. 10 minutes. Well, actually, maybe seven. We'll, we'll come back at 7:35. Thank you for that indulgence. It is 7:35, and we are now reconvened back. We now turn to a presentation of the 2023 Stormwater Outreach Calendar. And I'd like to call on our outreach coordinator, Diana Holler, who will provide an overview of the 2023 Stormwater Outreach Program. Diana's here. And then we will call on students who are present from Agape Homeschool Co-op to receive their certificates of recognition for participation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. So as you know, every year, the City of Lakewood Public Works Department and Swim Division, we create a Stormwater Outreach Calendar, and we work with different schools in the Clover Park School District. So this marks our 12th year of creating this calendar. And for 2023, we chose to use the Agape Homeschool students based out of Lakewood, Washington. So this year, we did a combo outreach. I used the YouTube videos that I created in the past few years due to COVID, and we also did it combined with an in-person talk with the students. Some of the messages were pollution prevention, illegal dumping, fish-friendly car washing, picking up your dog waste, where does stormwater really go? Thirteen pieces of art were chosen and used throughout the calendar. We had 1,000 calendars printed, and just before the holidays, I distributed most of those to the following locations. The Lakewood Chamber of Commerce received several hundred of them. Several automotive repair shops received them, Midas, Ray's Automotive, Bossy Chassis, Moose's Automotive, and several other businesses received them to hand out for free to their customers. In addition to meeting one of our NPDS permit requirements, this also met the third unique element of our inter-agency agreement between the State of Washington Department of Ecology, Pollution Prevention Assistance Program, and the city of Lakewood. Due to previous engagements, not all of the students are here today and are not able to represent their school. And with that, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to recognize the students. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Diana, for the presentation and wonderful for all the students who are both here and those maybe watching from home, not present. Thank you very much for your participation as well. It's always a pleasure to receive the Stormwater Prevention Calendar annually. It is certainly not only artistic, but on occasion humorous to get the various presentations from all the students. So tonight, I understand that Gunner Beadle and Jacob Clark are here to receive their certificate of recognition. So if the two of you would like to come on up and we'll get a picture, and I'll give you a chance to say something if you'd like. It's always fun to receive it. Jacob, good to see you. Thank you. Right? Here's your proclamation. Tell us in two words or less, no more than that, what you thought of the program. What was the inspiration for your art?
I just thought it was really cool to know that I was making a difference.
Very nice. Thank you very much. And do we have Gunner? Is Gunner here? Oh, there you are. All right, Gunner, I got to get your, your presentation certificate here. And I believe these others will get to the students in school, right? We'll get all these to the right students to make sure that they receive theirs as well. There it is. Save the best for last, right? There, right, Gunner? One of them. Well, here you go. Thank you, sir. Great job. You get the same opportunity to give us your inspiration behind your presentation.
I am not an artist. I am sorry.
Okay. Well, very good. Well, thank you, guys, for coming tonight. And did you get a photograph? Absolutely. Council members, come on down. Please. Yeah, come on up. Come on down, guys. Come on up front. Yeah, please. No, 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 please.
I have to look before I come to see what I'm going to wear.
Me too. Well, I have three heels.
That's good. So I'm not like a short person.
Okay, tonight, we normally would have a youth council report, but I understand that we have no members present. So we'll turn to the Clover Park School District Report, and I understand that Board Member Director Anthony Velez will join us virtually.
All right. Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having us. And on behalf of Clover Park School District, like to say Happy New Years. And of course, like to give a big thank you to all of the civic organizations and community groups and individuals who made the holidays that much better for hundreds of families in Lakewood. So thank you very much. Last December, we had our election for the Clover Park School District Board of Directors, and we elected Alyssa Anderson Pearson as president and Carol Jacobs as vice president, and myself, Anthony Velez, as the board's legislative representative for one year's terms. January is also Board Recognition Month, so I can be very appreciative of this recognition. On behalf of the School Board of Directors, this helps show the appreciation for the hard work and the leadership that we bring each and every day to make our community and school district that much better. Also, Lockburn Teacher receives the Middle School Science Teacher of the Year Award. This is for the science of Washington Science Teacher Associations, and the teacher is Yasmin Shakur Asadi, who has been working there since 2017 as the middle school science teacher. So that's a really, really great recognition and awesome award. Next up, we have Custer Elementary, which received a grant, and this grant is for $2,000, and it's from the Champion Students Success Foundation. The Champion Students Success Foundation was created to honor elementary schools who do exceptional work to meet the diverse needs of students in Pierce County. District participates in City of Lakewood's Holiday Parade of Lights. More than 200 Clover Park School District staff and students ring in the holiday season by participating in the City of Lakewood's Holiday Parade of Lights. This year's theme was Rockin' Around Clover Park School District, and the team celebrated with their festive gear and their cheers, and it was a very good success. So thank you also, Lakewood, for that opportunity. Next up, we have Learning in Motion videos, which highlight classroom learning and education. So twice a month, Clover Park School District is featuring short videos featuring the learning in motion in our classrooms. We invite you to follow us on Instagram or Facebook to view these highlights from our schools. Videos are also on the District YouTube Channel, under the Learning in Motion playlist. And as we all know, the winter weather is getting bad, so let's all prepare. And it's very important that family and staff, and of course, the students, all have their contact information is current, just in case for this bad weather. Families are encouraged to check with their student's school to verify contact information and to sign up for flash alerts. And you can do so at www-flashalert.net to receive the most up-to-date closure notifications. Also, remember to drive carefully when winter conditions get bad. And of course, last but not least, follow and like Clover Park School District on our social media platforms such as Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter. And of course, liking and following the district for news, announcements, and pictures of our students and staff in action. Our School Board meeting next up will be Monday, January 9 at 6:00 p.m. The following meeting will be Monday, January 23 at 5:30 p.m. Our school calendar represents, as of right now, students are back in class as of January 2, so they had a nice, long winter break. We do have a couple late starts, which are going to be January 4 and January 11. And a very important holiday coming up, which, as we all know, is the proclamation that was just announced, is Martin Luther King Junior Day, and there will be no school, and that will be January 16. We'll also have two more late starts, January 18 and the 25. And then we'll have a small semester break, and that will be no school on the 27. And just as a reminder, for the 2022 through 2023 board goals, as always, student growth and achievement, parent and community engagement, communication with stakeholders, supportive learning environment for students, staff retention, recruitment, and professional development, and most importantly on the list, fiscal responsibilities. So that ends and concludes my report on behalf of Clover Park School District. Are there any questions?
Well, thank you, Director Velez. Any questions of the Clover Park School District Board? Or Mr. Velez tonight about the board and its work? Well, thank you for coming tonight. We always appreciate the updates and look forward to prosperous 2023.
Absolutely. And thank you for the partnership and the opportunity to present.
Very good. Well, have a good evening. And as they say, I'm sure you have homework tonight, Director Velez.
Absolutely. It's an ongoing process. Thank you and have a great evening.
Take care. Next, we turn to the Next, we turn to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to our city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, at our address here, 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, or via email at bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to us electronically, and the clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments to the City Council in advance.
Mayor, we received written comments in advance from Linda Briner, Casey Crook, Sean Hill, Rachel Mackey, and Judith Minetti.
Thank you very much. And as I always say, thank you for submitting the comments in advance. You are certainly welcome to, but you need not repeat them orally if you wish not to. But you certainly can. And any member of the audience may comment on items related to city business under the public comment period. Our comments are limited to three minutes per person. If you'd like to present live virtual public comment, you certainly can do so by joining the Zoom meeting as an attendee and either dialing the phone number listed on the screen and entering the meeting ID number as indicated. Please use the raise your hand feature to be called upon. So what I do is I switch back and forth between those who are in person and those who are on Zoom. And tonight, we will start with those who have signed up in person to speak. First, on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Bob Warfield. And again, as a reminder, as we hit the new year, just please state your name and city of residence, and then proceed with your comments for our record. Thank you.
Mayor Whalen, Mayor Emeritus Anderson, and Deputy Mayor Moss, and friends of Lakewood, New Year's greetings. I didn't realize you had so much fun here. And I see I eat a... I should have brought my camera. I am here anticipating that there will be other people wanting to comment about our library situation, which is a subject to which I wish to direct my comments. Thinking back to first inklings, the first outline of Lakewood was a boundary drawn at the dawn of digital by our friend of the Lakewood Library. Following several failed attempts, the impossible happened. And with the tilt of our planet towards spring in 1996, Lakewood became a city. Digital has come a long way since. You can now draw your own map from public GIS, revealing every property boundary in Pierce County from the comfort of your home. This is useful if you are looking for an available four-acre site that can provide space to achieve contemporary standards for a modern full-service library. With those standards in mind, two things become clear. Our much-loved Tensler location cannot provide the space required. And two, no suitable site is available within the city limits presently. By way of footnote, I would note to you that both of those facts have been clear prior to and throughout the Citizens Advisory Committee process. And I have yet to hear them seriously discussed by a trustee of the library system. Lakewood's library dilemma requires fresh thinking, new inklings. Conventional thinking and total reliance on Pierce County Library System has confined us to a box. Imagination stopped where the sidewalk ends. What is a library for Lakewood? Is it simply a budget choice of a... I just have a moment, please. Of a county system governed by five trustees, removed with the flip charts of a junior taxing district? Or could it be a question of what does it mean, really mean, to be a city? Lakewood incorporates unique attributes, rich cultural diversity, a growing tapestry of shared traditions and aspiring affections. If we can think beyond the walls of that box, progress will follow. Not to a field of dreams, but to a city of expansive partnership and achievement. Meaningful excellence for library achievement will require City of Lakewood to assume greater interest in outcome, bear responsibility, take the lead. Commitment follows vision. We need vision big time, and we need out-of-the-box imagination, the kind that made Lakewood a city.
Thank you, Mr. Warfield. Next is Helen Wagner.
Good evening, Council. I'm Helen Wagner, and I live in Lakewood. And I too would like to address the matter of the library. I'm kind of wondering why we are continuing to play politics about this. Any issue that comes up is always someone else's jurisdiction. At this rate, we will have nothing left that is more than 10 years old. When one travels east, communities emphasize preserving significant buildings. The Lakewood Library is one of our significant buildings. But preserving it appears to be someone else's problem. Do we have no room in our society for nostalgia? I would be heartbroken if this place, which my husband and I shared for several years, were to be destroyed. Not only is it a significant part of our community, but it is very beautiful, more so than many other places in the city. Please reconsider saving our library. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Christina Minetti.
Hello, Christina Minetti, Lakewood. I'd like to comment on several issues that have come to my attention recently. First is the disturbing appointment of Mark Scheibmeier as the new hearing examiner for Lakewood. Curious who the city chose, I read about Mr. Scheibmeier's notoriety as a hearing examiner who has complete disregard for citizen appellants and those making public comment during environmental hearings. Moreover, there is evidence that he's simply an abysmal lawyer to boot. Therefore, while accepting a gubernatorial award for environmental policy in one hand, the city's other hand is signing a contract with the hearing examiner that they appear to have sought out intentionally as a way to frustrate the public's possibility of contesting administrative decisions about the environment. So much for that public participation that the city allegedly craves and in fact, needs so much. I request that you tell the public what the criteria were for selecting Mr. Scheibmeier and what distinguishes him, making him the best candidate for this job. The Library System Board of Trustees took renovation of the award-winning original Tensler Library off the table and will cease to consider it further, as I saw at the last meeting. I understand that you've already been presented with some financial aspects of de-annexation. Nevertheless, it would seem that the library system's figures have not been sufficiently useful or complete. Given the situation, the city must now step up as steward of Lakewood's local heritage and history and take action, yes, to think creatively about how best to save the original Tensler building. It is a desire of a huge number of people in the city. It's not a fact at all, like Mr. Warfield said, that it's not able, it's not possible to use that building or plot. Of course, it is easier to knock things down in this throwaway society that we live in. And people are often easily tantalized with shiny baubles dangled in front of them. But if the city really wants to build a sense of community, it needs to respect and defend the institutions, buildings, and places that are important to the people who live here, and especially those who have lived here for their entire lives. The city likes to hang banners on lampposts proclaiming that Lakewood is a vibrant, healthy community. A vibrant, healthy community is not one that has its beloved library, the most important civic building and institution that we have, demolished in front of its very eyes, discarded like a strip mall gone seedy. There's also the matter of Chief Leshai. It's just, the problem is that the city, you know, at first said, no, it's not a problem. It's the problem of the owner of the strip mall to fix it. It's something we've heard over and over again. We've heard it about. The Monumented Leshai, this tiny home village, the library, street racing, the trees, hideous warehouse developments, the school district, the troubled school district. Come on Lakewood. It's time to step up to the problem and own up to the problems of Lakewood and start solving them and live up to the expectations of your electorate. 2023, Happy New Year.
Next is James Dunlop.
My name is... Hello, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a Lakewood resident. I'm going to make six somewhat disconnected points. Point number one, I want to tell Dennis Haugen that according to academic studies, undocumented and illegal immigrants are significantly less likely to commit crime than native-born Americans. Point number two, the main reason I opposed Linda Farmer's election as county auditor was that it created a democratic deficit in Lakewood. She didn't complete her term, and we are now having a second appointed councillor. I know Fatty Bell eventually won a popular election. But the history of Lakewood Council elections shows that the incumbent has a huge advantage. The last election that a sitting council member lost their seat was over 20 years ago, on November the 6th, 2001. So the mayor, by endorsing Linda Farmer for county auditor, was endorsing and encouraging Lakewood's democratic deficit. Anyway, when selecting Linda Farmer's replacement, I hope you do a better job than you did two years ago. Point number three is two questions. Why did the city choose Mark Scheibmeier as its new hearing examiner? What did you like about his track record? Point number four, Amazon's share price has more than halved since the end of 2021, at a time when six-month Treasury yields are 4.65% and 10-year yields are only 3.74%. The warehouse boom is ending, and as suggested by an inverted yield curve, America is heading for recession. It seems that the destruction the city has actively been encouraging is for nothing. Point number five relates to de-annexing. It seems you're not comfortable with de-annexation, although I think Mr. Warfield has just challenged you to, you know, while I disagree with what he says about the Tensler building, I think he's challenging you to take responsibility, to see what you can do as a city. And I do think that, for some of you perhaps, this is your last chance to make your mark, to do something really, really amazing and for Lakewood to have its own library and take responsibility for its own library, to get out of the clutches of the Pierce County Library System. Point number six, well, in general, I just want you to take responsibility and not be, and not push everything out onto, say, it's Pierce County Library System's fault or its developers' fault, or it's Pierce County's fault. Anyway, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. That's the last individual who's signed up to address council for this public comment period in person. But if you have not signed in, it doesn't preclude you from addressing council during public comment. If you'd like to step up to the podium, feel free. This is your opportunity. Going once, going twice. I see no one approaching the podium, so I will call on those who are signed in to speak virtually. And the first appears to be Dosare Farmacus.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dosare Farmacus. I am the Minister of Education of the Panther Party. I'm a resident of Spokane, Washington. So what I'd like to talk to you all about, let's start here. Recently, a jury awarded a man named Doug Van Scoy a $2 million settlement for the reason that he had previously incorrectly lost his job for uncovering corruption committed by Don Anderson and trying to bring it to light when he filed a whistleblower, filed to blow the whistle on you incorrectly giving contracts, Mr. Anderson. He was told, stop messing with the chief executive, in reference to documents that you filed.
Let's keep it just Mr. Farmacus. Yeah, it needs to be directed to the council, not to one individual.
Very well. That he filed, that Anderson filed. Robinette told Doug Van Scoy, of course, they are forgeries, but if I said that, I would have to charge them as forgeries. So what do we know? We know that Don Anderson is corrupt. We know that...
Address it to the council, please, sir.
Okay, I'm getting there, buddy. Yeah, obviously, you know, I'm sure that y'all are very interested in, you know, okay.
What's your next point?
Will the council actually take a stand against corruption? Will you all say at this point, we condemn the actions of our colleague? We condemn his corruption. We condemn what has been done. And we are going to take responsibility and stop playing political games with everything. It's not our business that there, that one of our members is, has engaged in corrupt action that cost the man his job. It's not our business that we have killer cops on the street. And the same attorney who protected our corrupt colleague also is protecting them. Somebody asked if y'all could do anything, why y'all were still playing political games? And I think it's because that's all you're good for. You ask, you tell me to address the council. I'm addressing the council. Stop. You know, you talk about equality. You talk about several times, the idea that somebody's character should determine their, you know, should be the defining aspect of their life. Your character speaks for itself. If you want to talk about equality, normal people don't get to get away with doing things like this. All power to the people.
Thank you. Next is Amelia Escobedo.
Hello, my name is Amelia Escobedo. I live in Lakewood. I have a lot of things to talk about. First, I would like to say that I'm interested in running for interim Lakewood City Council member for Linda Farmer's position. Next, I would like to talk about Chief Leshai Monument. This was done during Christmas. I understand that there's somebody there of the tribe to be present. But what saddens me the most is that I called to see if I could file a police report for what was done. And they told me I could not. Only the person that owns the Thunderbird Shopping Center can do it. So I urge you as a city council to talk to that person and tell them that they need to file a police report. Because this right here, it's harassment to my community. And nothing is being done about it. I want to talk about being on the committee for the library. Although the community asked for this building to be saved, what I said was not important, and it was left to the majority of what everybody else wanted. I asked for the building to be saved. I asked for you guys to see if it can be saved as a historical marker, and nothing has been done on that. There is so much that needs to be done in this community that is starting to really, it's really starting to hurt me. We don't even have a recreation for our children still. My child is going to a school where there is a game called, what were they called? The Soviet Unions. And this is the community that I am in, that my children are in, that they're supposed to be safe. And this is why I keep coming to these meetings. And then you show awards to people, for the people that work in the city that don't even look like the people that live in your community. That was another slap in the face. Like, really? Like, you guys need to listen to us telling you that we need representation, that we need people of color in these positions, that our children can strive to be in. I called the police department, and they told me that only they can do a police report for Chief Leshai. and they told me that only they can do a police report for Chief LeShai. And I'm going to be there supporting the tribe on the twenty-seventh, I hope you all there too, Lakewood City Council Members. The last thing I'm going to say is to keep somebody in your ranks that is corrupt, you're guilty by association. So please, take all this stuff that I'm saying to heart. This city is suffering and change has to happen. Thank you.
Next is Otto Equitas.
My name's Otto Equitas, I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. Heard a lot about progress over the last year. There's a lot of progress happening. That's good. Progress on a library that nobody wants to see torn down. Progress on trees that nobody wants to see torn down. Progress on bringing people into the city ranks that have a history of showing no interest in what the people have to say. I would assume there's somebody within the city that vetted this new examiner. It would be very interesting to find out who that was and who they spoke to because this is wrong. I had a discussion with a few different council members. I'm not going to use names because I'm hoping that that will actually lead to progress. But this is pulling away from progress. How can we say that we're there for the people and then hire people that don't care what the people have to say? When Doc spoke earlier, he was told to address the council. I understand that words are tricky sometimes. But it is a council concern that somebody within the council ranks was knowingly forging documents and the county prosecutor knowingly covered it up. If we want to talk about progress, we can't talk out of one side of our mouth. We have to shout it. So if we want to keep talking about progress, there are some people that got to go. Mary Robinette has come up many, many times for many different reasons, whether it be police corruption or city council corruption. There's some people that got to go. All power to the people.
That is the last hand that visibly appears to be raised. Madam Clerk, do you see any others who have raised their hand to address council virtually?
Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Very good, then I'll declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of November twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. B, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of November twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. C, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of December first, two thousand and twenty-two. D, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. E, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. F, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of two million fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-three cents for the period of November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two through December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. G, approval of payroll checks in the amount of three million seventy thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and eleven cents for the period of November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two through December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. H, motion number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh one, authorizing the award of a contract to Asphalt Patch Systems, Inc. in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand for the two thousand and twenty-two unit price project. I, motion number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero two, authorizing the increase of contract authorization for the JBLM North Access Improvement Project Phase One. J, motion number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh three, authorizing the execution of a contract with the Washington State Department of Commerce to fund work related to the two thousand and twenty-four comprehensive plan periodic review process. K, motion number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh four, authorizing the execution of a letter of acknowledgement with the Niswali Indian Tribe related to the inclusion of city roadway in national database. L, motion number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh five, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with KPG Promis in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars for design engineering services related to the Rose Road, Forest Road and Fern Street Southwest Sewer Extension Project. M, motion number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh six, authorizing the execution of a settlement and release agreement related to Pierce County Superior Court Case Number twenty dash two dash zero four six dash four five dash six and Washington State Supreme Court Case Number one zero one zero one one seven. N, ordinance number seven eight zero, creating a new chapter of the Lakewood Municipal Code relative to the use of locally sourced compost materials for city or city-funded landscape construction or erosion control projects. O, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of August third, two thousand and twenty-two. Two, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Three, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Four, Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting minutes of October fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Five, Planning Commission meeting minutes of November second, twenty twenty-two, and six, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of November third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you very much. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Move, Mr. Mayor.
Been moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Bokey, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the consent agenda has been adopted. We now turn to the regular agenda. I see no unfinished business, Mr. Coffield. Any new business of interest?
No, Mayor.
So then we'll turn to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, first of all, Happy New Year to all of you and I look forward to a very robust two thousand and twenty trig. First up, I'd like to call upon the city attorney to continue a conversation that you began late last year at your December twelfth study session regarding the process to fill the vacancy. The council asked for some follow-up on a number of items, and so the city attorney is here this evening to provide you with that and also any additional information that you'd like to provide as feedback as you go through this process, we can take that this evening as well. And then after that, I do have a series of other updates as well.
Very good. Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm Heidi Walker, city attorney, and I'm taking you on a walk down memory lane with a memo that you will find on page one thirty-seven of your packet. And I say it's a walk down memory lane because it's pretty much the same process you followed before. You'll notice in the memo that's been provided to you, you had specifically asked about the rounds of voting, how you got through the various applicants down to the final person that you appointed, and that is detailed in the memo as well. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Walker? My only question, and perhaps Mr. Coffield can address it, is have we received any applications thus far? I think there was one.
Actually, Mayor, the city clerk updated me prior to this meeting that you have now received two applications.
Okay, and it's open until next Friday, I believe.
Away from Friday, January thirteenth, that's correct, Mayor.
Got it.
Yeah, five P M. Close of business, five P M. Yes.
And if need be, we can extend that if we wish to do so.
Oh, absolutely, Mayor. Absolutely, that's all within your prerogative as a legislative body, yes, as a legislative matter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, members of the council, as has been relayed to you before, the only rule really governing you outside some fairly obvious boundaries, yes, is the ninety days.
Got it. Well, we want to make sure we get quality candidates, so we will make sure it's it's open and sufficient time for us to do our deliberation within the ninety days and and get the best qualified candidate we can. Okay, Mr. Coffield, anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Brans, yes.
Yeah, thank you. You know, and why, I appreciate the memo and it, you know, I think it outlines a a process that served us well before and can do it well. I would just suggest, Mr. Mayor, that we perhaps want to look at the five questions, since we're only going to have time for five questions for each person. These are the questions we asked the last time, and I guess for me personally, question number three, the what is your vision for the city of Lakewood? Well, was the least helpful when we did this the last time. And at our future study sessions where we are looking at that, I would suggest that collectively, we think about what we might want to have as an alternative question. Two thousand and twenty-three is not a year when it's in our work plan to adjust our recognized collective vision. If the vision's going to be adjusted, it'll be in two thousand and twenty-four, the vision being a part of a comprehensive plan that's going to have a major update in two thousand and twenty-four. But there are a number of areas that the city does need to move on in two thousand and twenty-three that we might be able to craft a a question that would provide us some insight as to how well a particular candidate might contribute to the work we're going to have to make, whether it be with housing or homelessness or or something else. So I don't have a new question to propose, only that I think that that one should be readdressed and provides an opportunity for a more useful question for us in our work to select another candidate.
Well, it's somewhat duplicative of question four, frankly, and I think that we can, you know, ten minutes as we learned the last time, or fifteen, goes by awfully quickly. So we could probably, unless we felt a burning desire to have a fifth question for the sake of having a fifth question, we could probably dump it, have four questions and give a minute for a closing statement as opposed to thirty seconds, and we have plenty of opportunity to really analyze a candidate. Mr. Anderson.
I think we should reserve decisions on the number of questions and the time of questioning until we know how many applicants we have.
Yeah, absolutely, that makes sense, sure. Mr. Bokey, did you have something?
And in the way one and two are written, Mr. Mayor, what skills, talent, and then how would the aforementioned attributes? That's really one question, it seems in my mind, but anyway, we probably at some point in time should come up, the questions, if we're only going to keep it. And again, if we have a lot of candidates like we did last time, it'll be yeah, we'll have to work on those questions, might have to shorten it.
Right.
I do want to make sure though, that I, and I want to make sure we're on the same page, that we're continuing to advertise this or how are we going about letting folks know?
Councilmember Bokey and members of the council, our communications director Bryn Grimley is working in heavy coordination with our city clerk about not only are they each coordinating about the communication, they're also coordinating about what kind of response. So Ms. Grimley is well aware of what kind of response we're getting. I think that there's a part of us that was concerned about whether or not we were receiving everything, but a lot of that's been restored. The second thing I would remind you of is the last couple of weeks, people are thinking about things other than going for an open city council position, which is part of the reason last time we did this, you had the first two weeks of January open. And just anecdotally, when we put out jobs for that we're looking to fill, a lot of this stuff comes in in the last few days.
And we could always extend the application process ourselves through the end of January. We still have roughly sixty days after that to finalize our deliberation and make a decision.
And that at this stage, January third, might be a little premature, but yes, you absolutely have the authority to do that.
Well, good input, and I think we can tweak the questions as we get closer to the point of actually conducting interviews, but for now, let's just make sure we're robust in our solicitation of qualified applicants. And then we will move forward and see how we look toward the end of next week. And I'll just chat with Mr. Coffield about that, then I'll put it out to council, and then at our next meeting, whether a regular or study session, we can determine whether to expand the application period to make sure that we get good qualified applicants. Okay? Anything further, Mr. Coffield?
If I, Mayor, I had some updates, I'd just like to share with you as we closed out two thousand twenty-two and we enter two thousand and twenty-three. The first is, you might recall that the mayor, economic development manager Becky Newton and myself were interviewed by Business View Magazine, and they pulled together their article, they published that in early November talking about the city of Lakewood as it relates to economic development, and the title of the article is, "Where Opportunities Abound", and I know we sent that to you, but we, we're going to look to advertise that and share that with the community too in the coming days or week or so. On December, Friday, December sixteenth, myself and our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth, were provided a tour of the Lakewood Community Center, which is owned and operated by Pierce County, and they and their staff were kind enough to not just give us a tour, but kind of give us an overview of some of the challenges that they're facing with the building. Unfortunately, it is highly unlikely that we'll be able to get into that building in the next two years to reopen our senior activity center. They do have some major items to address there. Really, the only question they had for us is, as they go through their options as it relates to dealing with, you know, structural and other types of issues with that building, is the city still interested in, you know, using that as its senior activity center? And so our response was, yes, we are. But we also let them know that we're also hopefully or perhaps looking to partner with the Pierce County Library System, depending upon what they plan on doing as it relates to new libraries in Lakewood and perhaps having a community senior activity center as a part of that, though that's probably a number even further out in terms of number of years. And then in the short term, we just can't wait two years, so with all due respect to the county, we're going to have to, you know, look for some kind of a temporary location as both of those agencies go through their due process. And so I just wanted to share that with you. We also followed up with our county council member Jenny Hitchen, who you met with on December first, and just shared an outcome of that meeting as well, and we understand that she's going to be meeting with Pierce County Parks and Recreation staff and perhaps others on this particular issue as well. But I just wanted to give the council an update, an update on that. We learned right before the holiday break, thanks to our federal delegation spearheaded by Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland and her leadership, that we did receive two point five million dollars in federal funds in support of the last segment of South Tacoma Way between Eightieth and Eightieth, the north, the northern boundary of the city of Lakewood. And, you know, this is something we have been working on for about two years or so now. And ultimately, Congress did pass a budget and that item was in there and approved and supported not by, not only by our Congresswoman, but also our two senators as well. So want to extend some gratitude and thanks to all three offices, but certainly Congresswoman Strickland for her leadership and spearheading this. You know, typically, Congress passes a budget a little bit earlier in the year, though maybe not in the last twenty years, but typically they do. What that means is that the funds are not going to be available until about May or June of two thousand and twenty-three. We had hoped to bid that project out later this summer, highly unlikely we're going to be able to do that. We're at about ninety, ninety-five percent design, so we could, but just with the timing of the funding. We're at about ninety, ninety-five percent design, so we could, but just with the timing of the funding, we bidding a project like this out in June or July is just not a good time to do that. Really, you want to bid a project out the latter part of the year, the early part of a year, when all the contractors are hungry, so this is likely going to be a two thousand twenty-four project. And with this funding, it is now fully funded because the city stepped up and as part of the new biennial budget, you provided funding to fully fully fund that project. I'd like to recognize some city staff, you know, in terms of kind of behind the scenes, the unsung hero awards, if you will, in terms of what they do in support of the community, and the first is the staff of the Public Works Engineering Department, who, once again, they're caring and generosity and raising funds and toys and games and all kinds of gifts for folks in the Tillicum neighborhood, and that was very, very well received. And again, that's something they do day, year in and year out, and they do it because they enjoy doing it, and I just wanted to recognize them for that. And then likewise, one of our police officers, Sergeant Ryan Moody, he doesn't like to call it Moody Meals anymore, so I've been asked to call it Holiday Meals Program. And likewise, he spearheads an effort with a number of partners to provide meals for those in need in Lakewood, and that too occurred in the month of December in partnership with the LPD charity, and again, many others, and of course, the charity also sponsored their annual shop with a comp event that was also wildly successful. So again, you know, those are things that a lot of people just don't see or know, but I just wanted to draw attention that, you know, our staff, they they do more than just be public servants day in and day out. I think I mentioned that we're working to bring forward an updated interlocal agreement as it relates to West Pierce Emergency Management Coalition, which consists of the city, our Fire District, the City of University Place, and the town of Tillicum, and the recommendation from all five agencies is that we expand the the resources allocated to that by going from one point five FTEs to two point FTEs. We've actually been operating with two FTEs for about the last year and a half, almost two years, which has been fully funded by the Fire District, by the way, and the driving factor behind that has actually been the additional increase in resources as it relates to some of the heat events that we have in June and July. But as we look out into the near future, we expect that to continue, but also there's some other big policy documents and operational updates that we need to do, and all five agencies at the operational level are in agreement that increasing that program to two FTEs, and this is in the best interest of all of our communities, and again, it's two FTEs in support of, you know, five major communities as it relates to operation, emergency management. The fiscal impact is is a little over forty-two thousand dollars, and the fiscal impact to the city of Lakewood is fifteen thousand five hundred dollars, and I think that's certainly well worth the investment, and we'll be bringing forward that ILA for your review and consideration at a future city council meeting, I think we're looking at February sixth on 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 that. You know, I mentioned we we received some federal funding on the on the state, on the state side. Some really good news to report, the State Defense Community Compalability Account, the DCCA, which is the which is the state's version of the federal DCIP program, which originated here in Lakewood, and likewise, I like to think that the DCCA originated here in Lakewood too as a part of SSMCP. And that that program resulted in fifteen applications, and the city of Lakewood submitted funding for the North Clear Zone, and long story short, our project is ranked number one. And the the projects that meet the overall criteria, I think there's seven of them totaling thirty-seven or thirty-eight million dollars. The governor's budget actually funds, you know, again, we've been working on this for about five or six years now. We only got the program authorized a couple of years ago, but the governor's proposed budget that he he dropped at the end of the year includes five point nine two million, which funds the top three projects, which, number one, is the North Clear Zone, and then the number three project is several million dollars in support of the Lakewood Water District, and we've been in contact with them so that we can continue to support that, but also hopefully have additional state capital monies to fund other projects that are further down the list, and certainly if not this year, you know, you know, future state, 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 state capital budgets, but this is a, this is a kind of a huge watershed moment in that, you know, we created the program and now they're going to look to fund it, so some good news there. Also, the governor's budget includes the same or actually additional funding in support of a wide range of park grants, and the city of Lakewood are, we submitted for one to four four grants totaling two and a half million dollars, and long story short, all of our grants are way above the cutoff line in terms of what the governor has proposed in terms of funding, which means that if the state legislature at least follows that, or even if they want to cut it back, the city will be receiving those four grants as well, and they're five hundred thousand dollars for Ward's Lake Phase Two, two youth athletic facilities grants, one for, again, Ward's Lake, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Harry Todd Park from Pickleball Courts. And then the big one, one point two five million, again, for Ward's Lake State Park as part of the Land and Water Conservation Fund, so want to recognize Mary Dawsworth and her team for some great work there, once again, to be able to receive some funding. Also, on the on the state, on the on the state side, we're going to be meeting with Camp Murray at the end of this week to talk about the boat launch and see where we are or where they are or where we can partner, don't know if we can get something done this session. But the good news is that they've agreed to meet with us, and so I'll 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 let you know on Monday how how that all came together. And as we look out toward the end of this month, beginning of February, you know, the state legislature is still meeting virtually and this and that, but they're also going to be meeting in person. And I would like to recommend that we do take a day to go down to Olympia like we used to in the past and and go meet with our state legislators on their turf, if you will, to talk with them about our priorities and any other emerging issues that could be happening. And typically, a lot of cities do that as part of AWC City Action Days, which is on February fifteenth and sixteenth. I believe that's a little too late. And then on top of that, all the cities are going to be there, so you 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 kind of get lost in translation. And so our recommendation is that we go down there either on Tuesday, January thirty-first, Wednesday, February first, or Tuesday, no, yeah, Tuesday, January thirty-first, Wednesday, February first, or Thursday, February second. And I'll send something out to you if you could all get back to me. You know, really, having two or three of you go down, particularly the mayor and the deputy mayor, but if if you guys can, it would be good to have two to three council members to be able to travel down there, and it's it's at least a half a day, depending upon when we can get, you know, the meeting scheduled, but we haven't done that since two thousand nineteen, and I think it would be something to get back in the form of. And then likewise, we're also talking with our federal delegation about doing the same thing and going back to DC and perhaps visiting the Pentagon as well to kind of get back in the groove of 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 having these face-to-face interactions and communications with our elected leaders at both the state and the federal, the federal level. Speaking of Congresswoman Strickland, her team, she was reelected, and so she signed another lease for at least for for the first six months of two thousand twenty-three for her existing space. And the reason it's only six months is she has an interest in expanding her footprint on the third floor or somewhere else. And so we're in the process of evaluating that, and so we'll we'll see how that comes together later on in 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 the in the in the in the springtime. The Pierce County Library System, I got three updates for you there, right in the middle part of December. So the first is, is a follow-up to the last update. So the library district is supportive of donating the Tensler log that's located in their main library to the city, because they if they if they, whether they plan on renovating the building or whatever they plan on doing with that building, they got to move it out of there, whatever they got to do, because they can't, they can't have it stay in there. And so I did pass along that you folks had an interest in taking it on, and so right now, they're in the process of evaluating what it would take to remove it out of there, and they're also working with Mary Dawsworth and her team of perhaps locating it, you know, maybe down at one of the barns or something along those lines, if we can find a place to store it. And then when your boards and commissions work plan come forward to you next week, you will see in there in the Arts Commission, a work plan item to, you know, for them to take the point on identifying a place to place that somewhere in the community where it can be much more accessible for more folks in the in the in the community to see, yes. You throw me off, you throw me off my game there. Also, along those lines, the the Pierce County Library Systems Board of Trustees, they had their last meeting on Wednesday, December fourteenth, and that meeting was really focused on the beginning of their discussions about the future of libraries in 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 Lakewood. And talking with the executive director, I understand it was a fairly robust conversation, and there's, you know, not one opinion on the direction that they should go. And so they haven't made a decision yet, but they did spend some significant time reviewing the library advisory committee's recommendations. You know, they talked about, okay, well, do they do they need to demolish the existing main library in Lakewood, or do they want to renovate it? And so that's kind of where they are right now, they're going to continue that discussion at their next board meeting, which is sometime this month in January, probably the second week of January, if if I got my math right there. And their goal is to try and come to a decision regarding timeline and next steps by March of twenty twenty-three, so within two two months or so is is or two and a half months is what their what their goal is. Meanwhile, they did come in for a pre-application for their interim library, that actually occurred on December fifteenth. And they had a pre-application meeting, and that meeting included representatives from the city, but also the Fire District and the Water District. Basically, their project proposal is very straightforward, it's proposed to be at the corner of Gravel Lake Drive and Alpharetta. And really, we haven't identified any issues or anything, they did a really good job in terms of proposing what they want to do there and commensurate with not just our code, but the Fires Code and Lakewood Water District. And ultimately, the the size of that interim library they're proposing is a little over ten thousand square feet. So that's kind of where 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 they are there. Speaking of Gravel Lake Drive, if you drive down, a building has disappeared at ninety-six sixteen, Gravel Lake Drive. I know that was a slow go, but once they get all the interior issues resolved, including a great amount of asbestos, and given that they had to deal with a couple of fires that they were cleaning up of, you know, the demolition actually went really quick, but the reason it seemed like, the reason it took so long was just because of the abatement that had to occur on the inside of the building, but once they get that resolved, it came down pretty quickly. Pierce Transit, they asked for our support for a bus facilities grant totaling eleven million dollars, it's to continue, they're they're out looking to pull together some money to support the completion of their maintenance and operation base improvements over over off of ninety-six, and of course, you know, we we always provide a letter of support for any agency that we partner with here. Also, the two thousand twenty-three AWC Quality Community Scholarship, so the youth council has nominated Brandon Elliott for that scholarship, and so I know the mayor signed off on that, and so that'll be forwarded to AWC, and the scholarship winners will be announced as part of AWC's annual conference, I think, which is in Spokane this year, toward the end of, toward the end of, end, end, end of June. And upcoming events, you know, I I know you heard about the the Dr. King events that are going to be occurring in in January. In addition, on January fourteenth, our Parks and Rec Department, in partnership with a number of folks, are going to sponsor a a New Year, New You Community Walk and festivities at Fort Tillicum Park, and I think, yeah, it's going to be from ten to two thirty, ten AM to two thirty, and there'll be food trucks there as well, so a nice little winter, winter event. And then on January twenty-seventh, a Thursday, there is an Affordable Housing Forum, I believe, I recall this is sponsored by Shape and or some other housing partners titled Overcoming Barriers to Developing Affordable Housing in Pierce County, and that'll be at the Star Center in Tacoma, and I know, I think Councilmember Branstetter has signed up for that, but if any of you others would like to attend, just let us know, and we'll get you signed up for that, though. Just a reminder, what we heard this evening, Hanford McLeod is looking to sponsor an honor work, an honor walk, that's that that same, that same day, so that might result in a conflict there. And so, and I think that's everything. Yes, that is everything I have, thank you for your indulgence.
Very good, any questions of Mr. Cawfield? The honor walk on the twenty-seventh, described by Hanford McLeod, is there a way to coordinate the timing on that so we can enhance the opportunity to attend?
Well, I know he'll be reaching out to us, and the short answer is yes, we will. Is there, is there a time that works better for you folks?
Remember, Fridays are rotary days, which kind of takes me out of the mix between noon and one thirty. So one forty-five would be great, two o'clock.
So an afternoon, so.
Yeah.
It's it'll probably be a two to three hour event, just to try and manage expectations there.
Okay. Very good. Uh, let's see, I had another question for you. In our packet, perhaps it was one of the other materials, there were questions about our coordinated meeting with the Lakewood Water District Commissioners. And I guess my question to you, the proposed questions, I forget if it was in the packet or in your updates, are those for us to be able to address at a future meeting, or those were just points to ponder, or how are we addressing those questions?
So the Lakewood Water District sent those over, and so I've shared them with you.
Yep.
And what we plan on doing at the staff level is to provide just some background information and some updates specific to all of those, most of those items are operational in nature and not legislative, but that's fine, and
or interpretive.
Yeah, and we can provide some background information for you, and then likewise, if you have policy questions for the Lakewood Water District, for their board, you know, let me know, and we can send those over as well, and then we can try and identify a date and time for a for a joint meeting sometime, and
So that hasn't yet been set, right?
No, we have not set that, yeah, and and Mayor, the reason being is because I know right now you're focused on trying to fill the you know, your your seventh position here, so and the and the Water District said that they're very, very flexible regarding when they would be available, so perhaps February or March. That's a question.
Very good. All right, well, then, without further ado, unless there are other questions for Mr. Cawfield, we'll turn to council comments. I do want to start by saying normally in January, we talk about the reshuffling or the reappointing of council members to the liaison boards, commissions, and external boards. So we don't have that on deck yet.
That's that's on your agenda for your study session this coming Monday, Mayor.
Got it, okay.
Along with your board and commissions work plans, that's correct.
So we'll talk about it at that time, then, and we'll go through it, so be thinking if you want to, I know I've received a couple of info- information emails from some folks that that may want to change from one role to the other, so put your thinking caps on on that, and we'll discuss it next week, so. Council comments, Councilmember Bell. Do you want to revisit your appointment process, or?
I'm good, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any comments, but Happy New Year to all, and I look forward to a wonderful twenty twenty-three, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy but busy New Year, yes, to us all. That as we were meeting here this evening, there was at the Sprinker Recreation Center a public meeting being hosted by Pierce County regarding the the project for the Community First Village and the location, and that it was anticipated that there'd be some pretty robust participation by the public to include a few folks from Lakewood in, and the vast majority of the precomments that were there, that were on the website mirror our own concerns about it's a, the project concept is sound and 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 needed, but concerns about the environmental and and ecological impacts of the of the of the of the impacts of the, of the, of, of the site that was, has been initially put forward, which is actually a part of our agreeing that we want to fund the project because of its, because of the concept and the need, but that we also wanted to make sure that our investment was, was going to be done in a way that was sound environmentally. So it does seem that this is a, an ongoing piece that we need to keep our eye on, okay? Yeah, so that we've, you know, keep our voice heard about the, our concerns about there being sewers and stormwater and, and, and other things. And the fact that the, the site is actually to some extent a, a, a portion of the headwaters of Clover Creek. The, the second thing that I guess that I would say is that we, we all know and we're all focused on housing and things to do that. And we anticipate that the state legislature would also be as they have been for multiple years consecutively. In past years, the legislature has been amenable to the fact that they wanted to propose ways to make changes to increase housing. But they've been by and large respectful of maintaining local control by identifying options and things to go forward. And a lot of that has been done because most of those bills have processed through the local government committee within particularly the House. And this year, the House has taken that issue around housing and zoning for housing density out of that committee role and created a separate housing committee to be able to go and do that, which is primarily consisting of folks from the King County area as the members on that committee. So I think there is a, an area that we have to be watchful and perhaps vocal and perhaps maybe need to make sure that we are sort of know what's brewing by the time we get to the end of January, beginning of February, when we, some of us make a sojourn with the city manager down to the legislature to be able to go and do that. In that same regard, we have always been really helped by AWC focusing on maintaining, which has been in many areas, local control is doing that. And AWC seems poised this year to deviate from that. And they seem to have submitted a thing, so they were, they're open to the legislator, legislature dictating some land use and housing rules to promote housing. And we may want to take a look at our policy manual to where we sort of blanketly said we support what AWC says. And, and, and that may not always be the case. The, the committee that came up with the housing recommendations, and it was a committee that I applied to be on, but wasn't chosen. But one of the things that's, that's particularly concerning to me is they want to say that, that parks are like transit facilities and that you need to, and that you can prescribe increased density within a quarter mile of every park. And I, you know, and amongst some other things that I would not like to see happen. And I just would not want it to pass by without just telling our legislators what we think of that, a particular idea, along with some others. But I'm, I am looking forward, at the end of this week, to going out to Tillicum Elementary, where the students there have created their own diversity mural for their neighborhood to be able to go and do that, and they're going to be unveiling it here on Friday. And so I'm going to look to go in and support the, those young people in terms of both not only the diversity theme, but as another indication is we've seen several tonight of, 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 of an, of an arts community that spans multiple generations here in the, in the community. And that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Branstadter and Mr. Anderson.
Two things, one, just an FYI regarding library district. The library district is, I think, moving forward a proposal to create a capital facilities district in Sumner, which is a subset of the library district and would tax Sumner to build a new building in Sumner. So if they do something out here, we could probably anticipate that they would take the same avenue.
Yes, the local geographic area.
Yeah, they define a geographic area to be served and then they tack, they put forward a ballot measure only within that area rather than having the entire district fund improvements. The, the second thing with respect to the community first village, although there, there are a lot of people carrying pitchforks and, and and torches to a meeting tonight, and I'm sure very few of them will be convinced by facts. But there is no proposal to build the community first village in a wetland. That is a fallacy. It can't be built in a wetland, has to go through all sorts of environmental reviews, engineering, et cetera. And it will not be built without sewers. Spanaway Lake does have problems. There are over a thousand homes. They're all on septic tanks. They all put their phosphates off their grass into the lake and the septic tanks leak into the lake and it has all sorts of problems. The site in question is one parcel, but there are over twenty-plus buildable acres that are separate from the wetland. It would be like being, saying, well, the, this is a wetland here where we have city hall, so you can't build anywhere in the town center. You have, there are setbacks, there are engineering requirements. And there are many reviews and a lot of, a lot of things to come. But it happens to be a very big parcel, which does have significant wetlands within the parcel. But that doesn't make it unbuildable on the dry land portion. I guess you could subdivide it and then say we're not building in a parcel that has any wetlands. But that isn't the way it's going. So more to come. I would say that I still think it's very worthy of the, the city's participation. It is a concept that is, is an effort to address a very specific group within the homeless population generally in the west. And the people average fifty-five years old. These are people who have kind of aged out of being on the street. They're tired of getting beat up and victimized by younger people in the camps. They're more willing to take help and they'll say, yes, I will participate. I'll pay some rent out of my, out of my pocket, out of the benefits that I receive. I will try to be, I will follow some rules, et cetera. That gets a very vulnerable, finite group off the street. There's not a, a, a solution you find that in, except for those people. And, and it's, it's very worthy and it's very cost-effective from the standpoint of other services that they would utilize if they're left on the street. Portland has a more significant problem to show you can do it even worse in Seattle, San Francisco, that hard drugs have been legalized in Oregon by referendum. The, they give citations. If you call in on the citation, you can get it forgiven and you get three, but nobody keeps track of the first two. So there's essentially no enforcement. Here, here's a, here's a chip that we call a tit, a citation. And if you look on the back, that's where you can get help. People who run the drug treatment say they have never, never got a referral. There's never been anybody, zero, come to them as a result of that. But the people who are facilitating the program and asking for money from the government say, well, we just have to wait because coercive treatment, forcing someone in through civil commitment or, or through a court system, it doesn't work. So give us millions more and we will do more of what we're doing. And so the, it's, it, it's painful in the day job to see millions of dollars wasted. Comes through from federal and state authorities saying spend it on XYZ. It provides some moderately well-paying, middle-class jobs for a lot of social workers and people who are sincere about what they're doing. But there's, there's no throughput as to what actually benefits the people who need it the most. And so the, the community first village is an attempt to try something innovative that's worked somewhere else that has had success, has had very high level of success, but with a very limited population. So everybody says do something until you come around to try to actually do something. That's, that's my, my advocacy through the program. Because I was a, a, a big skeptic to start out with because I've seen, like, is it tens of millions of dollars flow through the county's coffers and seen no results? And I'm almost feeling like I'm, I'm, I'm complicit in, in the waste of taxpayer money just by allowing it to happen when there's no discretion to redirect it. Let's try to redirect it. And I think then in that case, the city's money is going to be well spent if it can work. And it will be, it will happen long after I'm gone.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, excuse me. Thank you all for supporting me tonight in this proclamation. It was well received and the comments were, that was very classy. So you made it happen. So thank you for that. And also, Happy New Year to everybody and I look forward to a busy two thousand twenty-three. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Happy New Year. I think we have a lot on our plate for two thousand twenty-three. A lot going on in the community that we need to stay on top of as we have chatted at length. I'm looking forward to the honor walk with Hanford McLeod, members of the Skowali Tribe. Hopefully we can do that in the afternoon on the twenty-seventh of January. I look forward to chatting about the council liaison appointments next week. And I understand this Friday in former council member Farmer's absence, I'll attend as the alternative council member, the SHAPE meeting. I think it's Friday at nine or eight thirty, something like that. So I will attend that this week on our behalf and I'll report back on the results of what's going on. So unless there's any further ado, any alibis for the good of the order?